All right, good evening and thank you everyone for coming to the Sohegan Cooperative School District Public Hearing. Um which will have a continued meeting afterwards. Um what before we get started, we will have public input. So if there's anyone in the room who would like to make any public comment. Please come to the first chair and um yeah and introduce yourself. Um anyone in the room? No, is there anyone online who might be raising their hand? All right, thank you.
Two people online.
Anyone raising their hand wants to speak? No, okay, so we will come back for a second public comment at the end of our meeting. And we'll get our public hearing presentation started. All right. And good evening and thank you for attending the Sohegan Cooperative School District Public Hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty six budget. I want to thank the staff at the S A U and the administration of Sohegan High School for their efforts to help prepare the budget that will be presented tonight. I would also like to thank the Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee who dedicated many hours to reviewing the budget. And had conversations with all of us to ensure their questions are answered. Preparing the budget includes many hours of work, discussions and staff with staff, administration, school board members and Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee. I would especially like to thank Dana Curran, Mike Berry, Steve Chamberlain, Galen Trembley. Amy Facey, Katie Hannan for their guidance on the budget and presentation tonight. Hopefully I did not miss anybody. So this year's goals, if you will go to the next slide. These years' goals are to improve literacy and improve mathematics. Expand and improve the use of instructional time, and this includes looking at educational opportunities outside of the classroom as well as utilizing our school day effectively. To support the continual improvement of instruction practices, we support the continued development of the supervision and evaluation model to ensure strong instruction practice and student engagement. Want to build and strengthen partnerships and improve facilities. Each item in our budget supports our students and staff in reaching our goals. And on the next slide is a brief look at our student population at the high school. You can see that our class levels remain consistent. An enrollment for the eighth grade class that would be attending Sohegan next year is one hundred and eighty four students. Which would increase our student population slightly. Reviewing on our next slide, we're keeping the staffing levels consistent with the current year. In order to create our budget, we balance the student population with the course offerings that students require to take. As well as the courses that students are requesting to ensure we have the proper level of staffing. On the next slide is a review of our support staff. Our special education administrator at Sohegan High School has reviewed our processes and aligned the level of required special education students, teachers. Paraprofessionals with the needs of our student population. Last year, we requested the support of our learning commons through a math tutor and a classroom assistant. I would like to thank the community for the support as it helps to work on our goals of improving math and literacy. For example, the services offered this year included not just help with homework, projects and performance tasks, but they also support test prep and study guide. Creation, test review and error analysis to support our instruction practice. V-LAC support, acceleration support, Peter peer tutoring and writing conferences. They also support external learning opportunities and group projects. On average, fifty nine to over sixty students access the learning commons every day. And approximately thirteen to fifteen students request reading, writing help or our math help every day. And over three hundred and five students have stopped in for math services. We are fortunate to have the community support in our education process. Our students are a dynamic group of individuals. We had three hundred and fourteen students participating in nine fall sports this year. Three hundred and fifty one students participating in clubs that include best buddies, environmental club, pre-med club. Math club and mock trials, a few examples. We have two hundred and ninety enrollments in AP courses, three hundred and fourteen enrollments in dual enrollment courses. Forty two students participating in over fifteen CTE programs. And students who graduated last year completed over ten thousand nine hundred and thirty three hours of community service. We are proud of each of our students working on their individual goals. We would not be able to support our students without programs designed by our administration and staff, so thank you for your hard work and consistent leadership. On the next slide, it shows a trend of our students and teachers over the past twelve years. The staffing level trends have been consistent with our student population. So on to the budget. And you can go on to the next one. This is our Warren article. I'm not going to read the entire thing right now. That will be read at deliberative. If we can go to the next slide. The F Y twenty six operating budget we are proposing is twenty one million, six hundred and twenty two thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. Which is a five hundred and sixty five thousand, eight hundred and seven dollar increase. Or twenty seven percent from the current year. The default budget calculation would be an increase of three hundred and eighty five thousand, nine hundred and eighty six dollars from the F Y twenty five operating budget. And we will walk through these differences later. On the next slide, it shows the assumptions used to create the budget. We received a surprisingly high increase in our healthcare rate of twelve point four percent to sixteen point eight percent. This year, Health Trust gave us our actual rates and they're broken down by each plan instead of one rate increase for all plans. Dental is an increase of five percent. This impacts our budget by approximately two hundred and fifty five thousand, two hundred and ninety one dollars in total. These estimates are due to our experience in healthcare services and a general increase in costs from insurance companies. Another assumption is that the New Hampshire retirement employer contribution rate did decrease slightly by point four one percent. For teachers and point seven percent for non-teachers. There is also a decrease in the classroom assistant staffing for F Y twenty six. You will note that on the previous slide, it does not show a reduction in the staffing level, and this is because we already made the change in F Y twenty five. Which the chart shows as actual numbers and will continue at the lower staffing level in F Y twenty six. And on the next slide, it shows the breakdown of budget by category. Each of these categories is reviewed with the Sohegan Finance Committee and school board members to understand what is included in the cost. Ensure that any changes align to our mission. Now I'll highlight some of the changes in each of these categories. The student services budget has increased two hundred and forty eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty six dollars or five point four percent. This budget is built by reviewing our student population that have I E P and five oh four plans every year. These are plans that define supports and services that students will receive. The special education budget is built on these requirements and it develops how many special education teachers, paraprofessionals, nurses and other support staff that might be needed. As well as required occupational therapy, physical and speech therapies. Some of these increases in this category include a ninety eight thousand dollar increase due to hiring a one-on-one nurse, which is required for student support. There's an eighty five thousand, eight hundred and twenty seven dollar increase of non-tuition out of district residential costs. An increase of seventy four thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars due to the increase in health and dental costs. A twenty seven thousand dollar, twenty seven thousand, one hundred dollar addition to a bus monitor needed for student service transportation. But there are some offsetting decreases which include a thirty seven thousand, eight hundred and eight dollar decrease in the special education out of district tuition. And adminis- in our school, oh. So let me explain our, so our school district is taking the approach to do what we can to support our students in-house rather than pay tuition and send them to another school. We have done this because we believe it is better to provide an education in our school and support the families within our community. The cost of sending a student out of district includes tuition, services and daily tuition. Tuition can be anywhere from twenty five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and much more depending on the need of the student. And the type of specialized school required. This choice does make a difference in our cost per pupil and our cost per pupil might be higher because tuition costs are deducted from all costs to calculate cost per pupil. Not being able to deduct, deduct tuition makes us have to include all the other personnel costs in the calculation, causing the cost per pupil to be higher. However, the actual cash outlay for these costs is lower and better for the taxpayer. In the administration category, there is an increase of two hundred and thirty seven thousand, three hundred and sixty five dollars for seven point seven percent. The main drivers are fifty thousand, four hundred and nineteen in healthcare and dental insurance costs. There's a twelve thousand, thirty five dollar increase in pool for salary increases that are non P P C positions. There's a nine thousand dollar increase in graduate course reimbursement. Five thousand dollar increase in legal services. And there's a hundred and four thousand, five hundred and five dollar increase in the S A U assessment. Let me please take a few moments to explain that assessment. The S A U budget was an increase of one hundred and eighty two thousand, two hundred and forty five dollars of five point nine percent. The changes to the S A U budget include salary increases, health and dental increases which were a hundred thousand, four thirty nine. Other benefit increases of twenty four hundred dollars, some H V A C supplies. And electricity rate increases of four thousand dollars. The Sohegan Cooperative School District has then charged a portion of this S A U budget based on town valuation and average daily membership. And I'm just going to explain a few things about the S A U and what type of supports we receive from them. The curriculum and instruction support from the Assistant Superintendent. Our math, science and English language arts curriculums reviewed in detail for alignment to state standards. And an increase in rigor with planned additional curriculum in the upcoming years for all levels of students. Support for improved instruction practice was also addressed during the school year as well as during the summer. We received support and negotiations with the P P C. The S A U administrators advise and support building leaders in practice and long-term planning. And we would not be able to accomplish this work without them. We would also like to, let me just say, where am I? Sorry. Um oh, the S A U superintendent is also working with three school boards and the community in developing a long-term plan. Which include measurable goals and then work through each to develop a process to achieve these goals. This is a coordinated effort to ensure each of our school districts are working together to give each student the best outcome upon the graduation of S A U thirty nine. There's also finance department that provides manifest payroll processing for all employees. Human resources provide support and hiring process for all staff and administration. They manage the healthcare, dental and all other benefits provided by the S A U. Director of Technology provides support for all school networking and communications. And the Director of School Nutrition works with the high school chef to plan meals, order food and supplies and budget for repairs and replacements. She also files works with families. And needs that need to ensure they receive their free and reduced meals and files required D O E paperwork. We also receive all the support from special education for each of our students, teachers and paraprofessionals in the buildings. These are amazing group of people where they have a lot of compassion for our students and families. There is also the Director of Facilities that works with our schools. They provide a schedule of maintenance for buildings through thorough inspection of our systems and they work with scheduling contractors at reasonable rates. And manage small construction projects like our secure front entrance and skylight repairs and replacements. Many of you here as think Roger Preston, Preston during our meeting as he's taken time to perform thorough review of all our systems. And prepare a ten to twenty year outlook for budget purchases. Because of the support received from the S A U office for curriculum, finance, special education programs, building grounds, hiring contract, we were able to focus. On the business of education for our students. On the curriculum side, um we focus on the curriculum budget is to provide a strong rigorous education engages all students. The administration at Sohegan High School has been working for the staff to refresh our course offerings and increase the rigor in the classroom and provide engaging lessons to our students. We're discussing ways to increase time learning inside and outside the classroom and ways to increase the hours of education. Education is not a static environment and it's always changing. Our focus this year next to help each student become the best learner they can, engage them in the classroom. Curriculum represents the largest percentage of the costs in the budget. And there is an increase of one hundred and fifty eight thousand, four hundred and seventy two dollars or one point eight percent for the F Y twenty six operating budget. The increase includes one hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and seventy three dollars for healthcare and dental insurance. Sixty seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety one dollars represent salary increases with an offset to removal of one classroom assistant. There's a nine thousand dollar increase to out of district tuition. A fourteen thousand, five hundred and forty four dollar increase in computer curriculum software costs. And a six thousand dollar increase in professional development. In the facilities, we have an increase of eighty seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety five dollars or five point four percent. Our Director of Facilities Roger Preston continues to manage our facilities and plan repairs with focus on preventative maintenance. He has created a detailed five-year plan that focuses on known repairs or replacements. However, he has projected out facilities work to the year twenty forty. He creates a budget that can be flexible should priorities need to be adjusted. And some of the main drivers and eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy seven dollar increase in salaries. A twenty eight hundred dollar increase in health and dental. Fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollar increase in painting costs. Fifty five hundred dollar increase in property and liability insurance. Twelve thousand dollar increase in gas. And sixty eight thousand dollar increase in electricity, which I'll describe in a few minutes. And there's a decrease in replacement equipment. This year, our Director of Facilities had to negotiate new cost contracts for our gas and electricity suppliers. We are fortunate to have a contract in the past for the fat, um sorry, for the past five years. And we did not see significant cost increases until this year. So about ninety percent of the increase in costs in this category is really due to our utility cost increase. More will also be discussed later in Article Three, which is a school maintenance fund warrant article. In athletics, the budget increased sixty one thousand, fifty seven dollars for seven point four percent. Some of the increases are a twelve thousand, seven hundred and thirty eight dollar increase in salaries. And the main driver of this is an increase in the athletic trainer uh salary in order to match more what they make in the market. There's a forty five hundred dollar increase in health and dental. A thirteen thousand, six hundred and ninety five dollar increase in athletic replacement equipment. And this includes uniforms, replacements and other equipment. There is a thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty five dollar increase in activity stipends. There's been little or no increase in stipends since twenty fourteen. Therefore, the administration looked at all activity stipends to assess the number of students served, the time spent in meetings and activities. When meetings occurred and the planning involved to assess different tiers of stipends. We are now budgeting for an increase of costs due to new clubs starting. As well as reasonable increases and advisors continue with supporting activities. There's an eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy five dollar increase in interscholastic purchase services. This includes an increase in official fees of three dollars per game per official. This actually is given to us, this is not a um discretionary choice. And there's also an increase in facility rentals. This includes our wrestling team, which we found out has grown large enough, it cannot practice in the school at this time and we have to rent space for them. There's a seven thousand, seven hundred and forty four dollar increase in interscholastic coaching stipends. And this increase is due to the addition of unified sports that includes soccer, basketball and track. Also, it's been no increase in coaching stipends for the past five years, so we did include a three percent increase for each coach. In technology, the budget increased twenty thousand, nine hundred and thirty three dollars or four point five percent. The increase is due to the increase in replacement technology of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty one dollars. An increase of salaries of around thirty eight hundred dollars, an increase in health and dental of thirty five hundred dollars. In food service, there's a decrease of five thousand, fifty five dollars or one percent. The main drivers are that there's an increase in salaries of eight thousand, one hundred and sixty two. An increase in health and dental costs. But there's a decrease in of two, two thousand, two hundred and forty one dollars in workers' compensation. And a ten thousand dollar decrease in food costs, thank you to the kitchen manager and our director of food service working diligently on menus and purchases. There's also a fifty eight hundred dollar decrease in software costs due to last year's purchase of new software system, which included one-time startup costs. We don't have this year. In transportation, the transportation budget decreased two hundred and forty three thousand, six hundred and eighty six dollars or twenty three percent. The main drivers of the decrease in this budget category are a force up forty seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollar increase in C T E transportation. Because we have many more students signing up for career and technical education classes, we have a need for an additional driver. Some students are able to drive themselves and we do provide them reimbursement for their transportation. There's a five thousand dollar decrease in athletic transportation based on being able to use our own vans instead of paying the bus company. And there's a two hundred and eighty nine thousand, nineteen dollar decrease in special education transportation. This decrease is a result of two items. One is a change in student transportation needs and the second is a change in our approach to budgeting for this category. We are budgeting for the known transportation needs at this time rather than the anticipated costs. In prior years, there were several unknowns that could impact this budget. As we have seen over time, budgeting in this category. I'm sorry, as we've seen some over-budgeting in this category in past years. We're limiting the budget to the known student population. If there are any unbudgeted needs that arise, we do have a special education capital account that we can use. So on the next slide, to the default budget calculation. The default budget is a calculation where you take the prior year budget, remove one-time costs and adding contractual requirements. As you can see, we start with the F Y twenty five budget. Of twenty one million, five hundred and sixty one thousand, eight hundred and ninety seven dollars, which includes all F Y twenty five warrant articles. We remove the special warrant articles that passed last year of five hundred and five thousand. And we start with a budget of twenty one million, fifty six thousand, eight hundred and ninety seven dollars. Then we add in the salary and employer paid benefits for regular education of four, four hundred and eighty two thousand, seven hundred and eighty seven dollars. We add in the S A U assessment, as this is a contractual obligation of a hundred and four thousand, five hundred and five dollars. We decrease the transfer to two of, to food service of sixteen thousand, eight hundred. We decrease the special education costs, including transportation service requirements by a hundred and fifty seven thousand, five hundred and six dollars. And the net all other change category reflects many small increases and decreases while with one-time costs which decrease that by twenty seven thousand. The total increase to the F Y twenty five budget to calculate the default budget is three hundred and eighty five thousand, nine hundred and eighty six dollars. So therefore, the default budget calculation is twenty one million, four hundred and forty two thousand, eight hundred and eighty three dollars. On the next slide, we call, we, we use what we call at-risk items or items that we may not be able to support if we have a default. These items include field, facility maintenance and repairs of a hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. This includes increase in the cost of our utilities that raise this budget category by eighty thousand dollars. And significant painting needs of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Athletic uniforms, replacement equipment supplies would not be able to be purchased of twenty four thousand, three hundred and twenty one dollars. Non P P C position raises and related benefits of eighteen thousand, four forty nine. And there are other adjustments that also increase cost to each of the categories. And on the next slide. You'll see a breakout of salaries and benefits and other costs in each of the budget categories. As you can see, seventy fourth, seventy four point six percent of all costs are salaries and benefits. Then each of the categories makes up less than five percent of the budget, other than student services, which is around six point seven percent. On the next slide, we take another look at the budget. Which shows the Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee categories in the pie chart. Curriculum and student services make up the largest cost categories and they relate directly to instruction and support our students. Okay. So I've spent quite a bit of time on the expense side of the budget and I'd like to take a few minutes to discuss the revenue side. So on this chart, you'll, is the projected revenue. You can see the estimated revenue for food service grants, other federal, local, state revenue. And our estimated fund balance. Food services, grants and other are estimated with no change or small increases for next year. But the significant change is the estimated fund balance. The estimated fund balance includes unused expenses and any revenues received. These revenues can be unpredictable and we do not currently know what excess revenues may be received. So we broke out the fund balance summary by how we predict we will use this balance. And F Y twenty five, the taxpayers voted for the warrant articles to fund the turf field, maintenance fund, technology and vehicle fund. We will be asking for funding each of these again and they will be discussed later this evening. This is the amount noted as voted from fund balance. The remaining fund balance will be used to offset the tax rate for F Y twenty six. On the next chart. Shows our projected tax, tax effort, perfect. The projected tax effort is calculated by taking the budget appropriations and offset it by the estimated revenue. Then you decrease your appropriations by the estimated revenue for the statewide property tax and the estimate amount to be received by the state. For adequacy aid. As you can see on the chart, there's an estimated increase in the tax effort, effort of seven hundred and sixty one thousand, five hundred and twenty two dollars. Approximately two hundred and forty three thousand, nine hundred and fifty five dollars of the increase is due to estimated revenue. To less estimated revenue to be received. And five hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars is due to an increase in requested budget and appropriations. Please keep in mind that when I use the word estimate as this is what the revenue is. We don't know exactly what we were receiving until money is calculated and sent by the Department of Revenue. And the D O E as well as the known amount of grants to be received for education and special services. So on the next slide. We project the tax rate impact for the projected tax effort. We start with the estimated tax effort and split it between the town of Amherst and the town of Mount Vernon based on A D M or average daily membership. Using the valuation by town, we can calculate the tax impact, rate impact of twenty four cents for Am, Town of Amherst. And thirty two cents for the town of Mount Vernon. So that is what we have for our budget and revenue. I wanted to ask, did you want to make any comments, Jeannie, from Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee, or do you want to do it at the very end of all warrant articles?
Prefer the end.
At the very end, okay, great. Um so we'll move on to the next, we want to do questions, I guess, that might make sense. Or do I do public?
Whatever you like. Go budget my warrant if you want.
Let's do, let's do it. Now, I think questions, comments. So after going through all of that. Um I'd just like to find out anyone here in the public and we'll, we can go online as well. Um see if anyone has any questions they would like clarified or things. Mr. Bauer, would you like to come forward and? Introduce yourself.
Thank you, it was all very interesting. I have a pretty straightforward question on the projected revenues. They're showing their. Grants estimated at two hundred and forty five thousand, two hundred and forty nine thousand dollars for the year. Is there administrative fee in the grant in the budgets or?
Currently, we do not include any indirect costs at all. That's all grants go to um to the recipients.
Thank you, that's answers my question.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions? Are there any questions online? If anyone has questions, please raise your hand.
No hands up.
Don't see any hands up. All right, so we will move on to the next slides. Where? The special warrant articles. So we have the school maintenance fund warrant article, Article Three. Which is. Mr. Vayu.
Thank you. Chairman Grant. I'm just going to read the. The article quickly and then, you know, give a little explanation afterwards. Shall the Sohegan Cooperative School District raise and appropriate the sum of up to three hundred thousand dollars? Do be added to the Sohegan School Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund previously established in March of two thousand and five. This sum to come from the June thirtieth, twenty twenty five unassigned, unassigned fund balance surplus. Available for transfer on July first, twenty twenty five. No amount to be raised for new taxation, requires a more majority vote to pass. Think this is something we've done for a long time, so most people who are familiar with the school know what this is about. This is our capital maintenance reserve fund. It's the fund, this fund is how we pay for big repairs and upkeep on the buildings and grounds. Uh things like roofs, heating systems and the infamous leaking skylights. Which has noted many times over the last few years are original to the building and well over thirty years old now. This fund is also what we rely on if something unexpected happens, like a major failure and we. Uh lovingly refer to this as the boiler fund as well because if a boiler blows up in the middle of the school year, this is the only way we're going to pay for it. Um it's guided by an extremely thorough capital needs assessment that was completed by our facilities director Roger Preston. Um, it's guided by an extremely thorough capital needs assessment that was, uh, completed by our facilities director Roger Preston. Um, if some, in some cases, he has, uh. Anticipated expenses going out forty years on some items. Uh, it's at a minimum of five on just about everything else. So we know what's coming. We have a pretty good idea of what's gonna cost us and, and, uh, you can see the schedule, the plan schedule here. This is assuming that no boilers blow up. Um, and, uh, so this is. We can be pretty confident that this is a well thought out. Proposal and, uh, the, the amount is, is easily justified. That's all I had.
Great. Um, we'll take any questions from anyone here in the public? Be any, need to check it to flip back and forth, sorry.
No, no.
Okay.
There it is. I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Barry.
No hands raised, okay, so, um. We will go to article four, which is the recreation revolving fund, I believe. And that will be presented by Ms. Anna Laysen. Right?
Yep, okay. So article four, um, is asking for ninety thousand dollars to be added to the Sohegan Recreation Revolving Fund. This is the fund that we have, uh, referred to. This fund was, was created in. But, two thousand and sixteen. Um, and has traditionally been referred to as kind of the turf field funds. You know, the funds that we have collected in the past, and if we go down to the next slide. The whole idea has been to, along with the other warrant articles, to plan ahead for bigger expenses. Take some of those funds each year, plan up, be ready and be prepared to replace the turf fields when we need to. We have looked into and done some long-term planning on some of our other recreational needs. And realize that there are some other bigger expenses that are gonna have to get addressed, such as making the bleachers ADA, um, compliant. Doing some work on some of the light poles, the other projects you see up there. So the idea is to leave the funds that are currently and have been gathered for the turf field. Since that was what the representation was and what the plan is and what we need to have those available funds for. But to continue to contribute, um, at the current rate so that we can start adding funds that will allow us to also address these other needs. Um, so as you notice, none of the withdrawals start happening until fiscal year twenty-nine. Again, that's because we kind of consider the funds that are already in there sacred to be held aside for the turf field. As well as obviously some of the ongoing funds will continue to fund that. So this is the idea, again, like the other warrant articles, you know, we're trying to be fiscally responsible in our planning. Uh, make sure that there's no big spikes in costs and that we're able to meet the needs we have long term.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask anyone here if they have any questions on that warrant article. Don't see anyone there, anyone online raising their hand? None, okay, we will move on to the, uh, to the next two, which the first one will be technology. Yes, which we presented by Mr. Glover.
Thank you. Uh, this technology plan is consistent with our, um, other capital, uh, reserve funds. It's a result. Of a lot of recommendations that came, uh, a few times from Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee. That, um, imploring us to plan, do more long-term planning and these capital funds are the result of that. This one, uh, technology really supports our simple, uh, technology, technology use in this educational environment. Without it, we wouldn't have a modern educational society. Uh, like the other funds, it is, uh, born of, uh, technology leadership. Evaluation of our existing technology needs and their forecast for end-of-life. Um, equipment upgrades or replacement costs and schedule. Uh, some of the resources that are included include our telecommunications phones and alarm systems. Our, um, internal network, switches or firewall or access points and our wide area network. So that we have interconnected, interconnections between and throughout our buildings. Um, the bottom of this slide, you can see this, this fund started in FY twenty-four with a twenty thousand dollar seed. And, uh, last year was fifty thousand and FY twenty-six through FY twenty-eight is the current plan at fifty thousand dollars. A year, the next slide. Um, shows a bit of some of the things that are currently on the project, uh, schedule.
Great, thank you. Is there any one here who have any questions on technology? None, and anyone online? Do not see any hands raised. Thank you very much. So we'll flip back to the last one article, which we'll be presenting. The vehicle fund, which will again will be presented by Mr. Glover.
Thank you again. It's a similar layout and similar, uh, history for this. Warrant article, if you could flip to the next slide. Um, at the bottom of this slide, we seeded it last year. This was a new fund last year with twenty thousand dollars. And we're looking to, to, um, continue to fund it at the level of fifty thousand dollars fiscal year twenty-six through this, at least fiscal year thirty-two. Um, this fund's purpose is, is essentially to, um. Provide for the replacement of existing vehicles, major repairs on existing vehicles or the acquisition of new vehicles. Uh, some of these vehicles that are in our fleet right now. Put a minivan and a ten-passenger van, uh, to support our student services. Uh, two ten-passenger vans for our athletics and CTE transportation, which as Stephanie alluded to, um. Yeah, has led to a significant savings in, um, bus transportation costs. So this is a net positive to the taxpayer. And we have a, a tractor to get, a truck and a gator that support our, uh, building and grounds facilities. And the next slide, uh, not a lot of projects in this, but when the vehicles, uh, do need to be replaced, they, they are quite costly. So you can see this, um. Oh, and I, I must spoke earlier, I said this was going to be funded at a fifty thousand dollar level going forward. That's a typo. Just gonna fix it right now on the slide. Twenty thousand dollars going forward basis. So you can see in this, this is, this is, uh, accurate. Twenty thousand dollars is our anticipated funding for this, um, through FY thirty-two. With the replacement of the grounds tractor in FY thirty. Thanks.
Thank you. Again, last, any questions in person? None online? No hands raised? All right. I think is the fastest we ever done, though, like here. And, um, Sohegan Finance Committee, Genie, would you like to come forward?
Thank you, guys. I just wanted to acknowledge, um, the folks that are here tonight from the finance committee. Um, Howard Brown from Mount Vernon, Mark Chaney from Amherst, uh, Eepole Christensen from Amherst. And. That's it, I think, for tonight, we're missing your G.
There's a couple online. Raj is online this evening.
Who, who's?
Raj.
Raj.
Oh, Raj is online, okay, great. Uh, I know Mary who said she was on her way, Mary Lynn Mullins. And, um, Paul of there too is away, or he can't be here. But, um, I just wanted to acknowledge the great work that they've all done, um. It's, it was really, our, you know, our mission really is to, um, examine the, um, proposed budget. To enable the taxpayers of Amherst and Mount Vernon to feel confident that all the costs are reasonable and accounted for. And to work in concert with the, uh, school board in that endeavor. Just to let everybody know what the process is, uh, Stephanie alluded to it. But, um, we're matched with, um, a board member or two, um. In, and then, um, we are broken up into various functions, um, that we, um. Focus completely on and, um. Reports are prepared, presented and posted. We met throughout the year with, um, Amy Facy, the business administrator. The administration and with representatives of the school board to make sure that all our questions were answered and we appreciate. Um, their being there in order to help us get our questions answered. Uh, you know, immediately, so we don't have to really wait, um. Uh, we were also given time at each board meeting to comment, which we appreciated. In addition, we participated in a joint budget workshop with the board that resulted in further changes to the budget. Um, and we thought was very fruitful, um, endeavor. Uh, we plan to vote this meeting, uh, this evening after the board's public hearing on the budget and each of the warrant articles. Um, although I cannot yet speak to the exact level of support of the finance committee for the proposed FY twenty-six budget, um. I can say that we found the increase in the budget to be minimal, reasonable and well justified. As per past years, it appears that any additional warrant articles being proposed are being funded with the unassigned fund balance. And do not place any additional burden on the taxpayer, uh, which is important to note. And that's not it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. We really truly appreciate the interaction we had, um, with the group. And they challenged us on our thinking and making sure that we're doing the right thing. So thank you very much. And, uh, just last summary, um, just want to say that, uh, thank you everyone for coming this evening. Uh, we'll be presenting an operating budget of twenty-one million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. Requesting three hundred thousand dollars for the capital maintenance trust fund. Ninety thousand dollars for the turf maintenance fund, fifty thousand dollars for the technology fund and twenty thousand for the vehicle fund. And as Genie had said, the request for these special warrant articles would come from the unassigned balance and not requesting additional money raised. From taxation. Um, so the, the only thing that's really left, you want to go to the very last slide, we'll just, um. What we have left, we do have a board meeting, January thirtieth. Then our deliberative session is February fourth. Um, it's six PM, I believe. Is that right? Amy, six PM? Deliberately? Is it seven PM? Okay, is it six?
Six. I have six.
Six. Six PM. So February fourth, six PM in the theater downstairs. And then March eleventh will be district-wide voting. So that is what is remaining for the budget season, but it will not end with all the things we have left to do. Continuing with our students, so. Thank you, everybody to lis- for listening to us tonight, um. What we need to do now is. We're going to go on with our. Board vote, so we have to move each of these articles to the deliberative session. Okay. Can I have a motion to close public hearing? Second, second, those in favor? All right, public hearing closed. So now we will also reopen our meeting that we had started earlier. To continue, now we can take motions to vote. Amy, would you prefer each warrant article? Voted on separately to move to deliberative? Can we do it all at once?
Um, that's fine to move to deliberative, but then obviously we'll need to tally for each one. Or the recommended.
Oh.
So it's two separate votes.
Two separate votes.
Yep, so you're moving them to deliberative and then you're voting whether you recommend or not recommend each particular warrant.
Oh, we can move to deliberate on this area?
Or no, no.
We should do it all now.
You can move to deliberative all at once if you're fine with that and then, but then for the recommend, not recommend.
Okay, so let's do this. Let's have a motion to move. All the warrant articles presented this evening to deliberative session. You'll make, Anna makes the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Glover. Um, those in favor? Those to deliberate, thank you very much, it's seven zero. So now what we actually have to do is we need to vote on our recommendation. So we'll have to do each one at a time. So I will take a motion. And get the ones in order. On article two. Just. Mr. Vayu moves to support article two. Is there a second? Second, maybe we can try and keep that the same. Okay, all those in favor and support of article two. Seven zero. And I have a motion to, in support of article three, this capital maintenance fund.
The two.
Second. Thank you very much, those in favor? Seven zero. And I have a motion to support article four turf field replacement.
Recreation revolve.
Oh, sorry, recreation revolving.
Oh, recreation revolving, the wording on that has changed.
Dan has moved second, okay.
Thank you. Those in favor? Thank you very much. And I have a motion in favor and support of article five, the technology. All right, those in favor? All right. And then finally, uh, articles, some motion in favor of support of article six, the vehicle fund. All right, those in favor? Seven zero, thank you very much, everybody. For making a smooth process. Thank you for your support, everybody. Okay, so we're gonna move on with our regular meeting with the personnel. And would you like to discuss this? Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, I want to have Steve speak to it.
Okay.
So. Tonight, um, we're bringing forward a, uh, a candidate to, uh, work, uh, to have the second semester. This was due to an unanticipated leave, uh, of a faculty member resigned. Um, and so it is my honor and pleasure to bring Josh Conklin's name forward. As a candidate for, um, the, the teaching position, the English position. So there's two action items we need tonight. One of which is because of the teacher shortage and how difficult, especially mid-year. That as the, um. The, um, we need a motion to authorize the designation of one-year cer- certification of eligibility authorization. For this position. So that is required by the DOE that the board is aware that this is a position that, um, is, will have support, but it's uncredited. Uh, but it is certain within the regulations of the, the state. And then we just need a nomination for the teacher. Okay, so two different actions.
All right, make. That first motion.
One year certification.
One year, yes. Yeah, so there's a motion to authorize the designation of one-year certification.
I'll second that motion. Eligibility period, we don't need.
Eligibility, okay. Seconded by Mr. O'Keefe, any discussion? I'm just gonna say, very excited to have Josh on board if he takes this, he's a, those who know him in town, he's a. He writes a lot of poetry, he's a well-mannered gentleman and I think he'll.
School's very lucky to have him, and he's fired up. Fired up, there we're gonna go.
Nice.
So now it's gonna be great. He does have some teaching experience, just not public school experience. He spent a lot of time, he's subbed with us, he's gonna transfer, Elizabeth and Dana. And, uh, he's done a nice transition, so it's gonna be great.
Awesome. Any other discussion?
I think, I just, uh, tried to track, uh, we've had a lot of personnel. Yeah, again, various times, and it wasn't quite clear to me which, where this replacement fell. Thought we had one that we did replace, so I was just trying to keep the, keep it all straight in my head. I don't, I don't know if that's a discussion to have in public or not.
So we, um, piece, the first semester, we pieced it together with overages and things like that with staff. Cause we didn't, uh, have the application pool, but we put it out again and we have the application for mid semester.
Yeah.
So it's a position that's been gone this year.
It's a position that's already been gone and you could step back going in by the energy and good graces of staff. And now we're looking to fill this gap with this person and it's, and I guess the extension by that is it's budget neutral because the staff person. Or budget positive potentially.
Budget positive.
Probably is budget positive because that staff person's salary is already budgeted for. This person's salary presumably more junior needs the certification, is gonna command his highest salary.
Correct.
This actually buzzes up budget positive and it's a good candidate, okay, so just wanted to align that in my brain. This actually buzzes up budget positive, and it's a good candidate. So just wanted to align that in my brain.
Anything else? All right, the motion's on the floor. We'll take a vote. Those in favor of the motion? Seven zero. Thank you very much.
To accept the nomination.
Motion to accept the nomination made by Ms. Peters. Second by Mr. O'Keefe. Any discussion on that? All right, those in favor of the motion? And that would be seven zero as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Conklin. You're welcome. So he can high school. Awesome. The international trip, this is the Japan trip that had been pulled before. And mostly for the executive summary reasons.
Yeah, so I would direct your attention to the executive summary. You saw the included once again, the itinerary for the trip, but we asked the Japan, I should be asked the administration and the people chaperoning trip to create an executive summary, which is a practice that, you know, so he can, high school has had for the last five or five or so years. We'll take any questions off the executive summary, if you have any questions off of that, but we're looking for approval of the Japan trip this evening.
We should probably put a motion on the floor first to accept the Japan trip.
I move to accept the international trip based on the executive summary and the proposal for two thousand twenty six to Japan.
Motion made by Mr. O'Keefe, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Julie Zimmerman and discussion. Do you have any questions?
I have discussed. I really support this. I'm really pleased to see a lot of field trips coming. Jeannie still here? No, but she has mentioned before a public comment about the momentum of the winter session, some other historical things have gone away. And so these, to me, is a nice way to embed some of that in the educational mission. I hope she would agree, or at least it's a nice surrogate. I would like us to seriously consider the next season. A fund of some sort that could pay for one of these trips for each student during their career here. Because they're very costly. I mean, it'd be difficult unless you have a family of means, it'd be very difficult to participate in more than one, or or pay for half of the cost, or have some ability to sort of guarantee that there's a nice trip like this at least once in a four-year career. I don't know the numbers, I don't know particularly how to fund that. That's what I'd like us to discuss, is to see if we can have a student taxpayer-supported fund to enable at least one of these types of experiences in a four-year career. I'd like that to be a discussion in the next term, to see if that's feasible, viable, and what that might take. It would require maybe a survey of all of the field trips that we currently offer, their, their current costs. Having, you know, how much participation is to understand what the financial impacts might be, or what the range of them might be. And and enable us to have some discussion and decision-making on that front.
Okay, that will have to be added.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I'm very impressed, Mr. Barry, about the diversity of our experiences for our trips. And I think it just really adds to the educational experience all in the whole package from through through nine to twelve, and I think the Japan trip sounds phenomenal. I'm wishing I could probably be a chaperone on it, because I've been there and it was just a great experience for me. And it's, it's, it's a little pricey, but I think the kids are gonna really enjoy it. I'm proud to support it.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so that's a motion, and we need to vote in favor of the motion. So those in favor of the motion on the floor about the Japan trip? That would be seven zero as well. Thank you. All right, Program of Studies. There were some board notes in here of some of the things they're looking for. Is there a presentation or any discussion on this, Mike, or?
No, I, I, I thought, you know, we, we put something, this has been a conversation of that we've had over the course of this year and previous years, the Program of Studies that's been included in previous board agenda, we're, we're looking to, to work with that. There's the change memo and the proposed Program of Studies for twenty five, twenty six. I know we've had some open questions around J L P. The writing course, there's some science department questions, and, and really good work that's been done by Erica Fosket in the, in the Science Department, that I think we want to share a little bit, but there's not a formal presentation. So what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Steve, who's been working with Dana and the administrators there at Sohegan, talk a little bit about what we're hoping for, for tonight.
And I'll turn it over very quickly to Dan.
Beautiful chance, and I'm gonna bring another. Elizabeth and Tim, Elizabeth and Charbonneau, our Dana faculty, and Tim Pescaro, our Director of School Counseling. Do all the heavy lifting around our Program of Studies and getting ready for course selection time for our students. So Elizabeth is the one that drafted the change memo. So they're gonna speak to some highlights in the change memo. You'll see that it's not nearly as long as you've seen in years prior, and then happy to take questions that you might have about it.
Awesome, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here to speak to our Program of Studies again. As we've already said, the change memo, we really make an effort to highlight the pertinent shifts that we've made from one year to another. And we'll spend a little bit of time, as we're sitting at this table, contextualizing some of those details. We're of course happy to take any questions after, or talk about any rationale behind the changes that you see that have been outlined in there. Compared to years past, even last year when we talked about, you know, splitting apart some of our technology and comp side courses, making things a bit more available to kids. The changes this year were relatively few compared to years past. But this is just a really important opportunity for some transparency and discussion around those iterative shifts that we make each year. The primary focus of our updates this year has probably been within the Science Department. Tim will speak to that briefly, and we'll be really excited later on this spring to have Erica Fosket-McCarthy come and do a follow-up to the presentation she delivered. I think it might have been two years ago at this point. And she'll be able to share with you all of the wonderful progress our Science Department has been, has made working with her in terms of understanding their programming and thinking of how to better challenge and support all of our kids in their science education here. So as you know, the Program of Studies is a really consequential, significant document. It represents a lot about our school and what we have to offer our students, which is why it's so great to be here this evening and speak to it. Our process is pretty robust. It gives us a chance to interact and bring in as many stakeholders as possible. So I just wanted to speak to our timeline and our process really quickly before I hand it over to Tim. So every single year, we begin with an overall review of our Program of Studies that starts off in I L T, just to review our timeline and our process. Then all teachers across the building have a chance to review their department section of the Program of Studies. Make a small shift to language, whether that's an essential question, or, you know, maybe redirecting a little bit of the verbiage in the course descriptions, but all teachers have a chance to review the description of their courses. There's also always the opportunity to propose new courses. There were no new course proposals for this year, which is one of the reasons why the change memo was a little bit light. But when there are new course proposals, there are a number of different things that we ask teachers to consider. One of them is student interest and needs. The other is, you know, the course competencies and the learning and things like that, that are expected to happen in that course. We have an entire revision and feedback process that goes along with those course proposals, but again, no new course proposals this year. So once the departments and the teachers have a chance to review their sections from their perspectives, the instructional leadership team has a chance again to review it. It's then handed off to building leadership, to do another review just through for coherence, to make sure that all of the structure works that we all have an understanding of any shifts or updates that were made. Then we assemble the change memo to share with all of you. And then we come here this evening to speak to it a little bit and answer any questions that you might have. So that being said, a little highlight like of our process and what we need to do with that document, the stakeholders we bring in. I'm gonna hand it over to Tim, and he'll speak a little bit about how, from the Student Services perspective, they use the Program of Studies during this very important and busy time of year.
So, you know, I think it's, I mean, I've been at Sohegan for all intents and purposes since twenty ten, and the school has evolved quite a bit, you know. Across that time, and I would say like, you know, earlier in my time, and, and so he gave, you know, I think we talked a lot about individualized and personalized. But from a course perspective, there were pretty like well-worn roofs in terms of like how students progressed through kind of like a four-year plan. You know, we only had six scheduled, scheduleable periods when I started, and, and, you know, our part of Humanities courses looked about the same. You know, they were similar then as they are now. And so there was less room for students to, you know, I, I think kind of personalize, make it of their own, kind of carve out different pathways. And I think the work over the past several years has been, you know, in service of creating the lanes for students to really use this place in a way that's gonna help them towards their, their post-secondary goals. And as a result, I can say, I, you know, I can't quantify it, but I can for sure say that there is a, a major difference in terms of the, the pathways that students are kind of carving out respective to the, to their future plan. And so, you know, with that said, we really emphasize four-year planning when we're working with students. You know, we ask the ninth graders when they get to the course selection time of year to really spend some significant time with the Program of Studies, project out the courses that they anticipate that they'd be taking across four years. We proceed that work with career exploration, because we recognize that post-secondary planning in, in course selection is inextricably linked, and, and sort of we need to do a little bit of that exploration and that introspection before you're even ready to understand what opportunities you're seeking to take advantage of while you're here. And, and, and those conversations, by the way, aren't limited necessarily just to courses, right? We're, we're also talking with students, you know, in what ways do you feel like you need to develop outside of the classroom? Are you looking to, you know, take advantage of, you know, you, you know, leadership opportunities that might present themselves to? In which ways? What are your extracurricular interests, right? Because that, you know, at the end of it, when we're talking about post-secondary planning, right, we want to make sure that students are prepared academically for whatever it is they want to do after they, they leave here. And, you know, post-secondary institutions also are interested to see evidence that a student is ready to contribute to their community in a larger sense as well. And so all of that is tied into what we're, we're working with students on. And so, you know, in the, in the ninth grade year, we'll, we'll spend that time with the four-year, four-year game plan. You know, in tenth grade, again, deliberately prior, before we get to course selection, we are revisiting career exploration. Because, you know, things come into sight a little bit more, as they've had a little bit more experience. They, and, and that may influence maybe potentially pivots in their, in their four-year planning. And so counselors will revisit the four-year plan that students have outlined a little bit in that tenth grade conversation. And, you know, I'd, I'd say another main, major difference is we're, rather than everything kind of happening in just this kind of course selection presentation, as it maybe had happened in my first decade, we're kind of pulling stuff out now in, in, in creating more depth of exposure with things like the C T E opportunities where, you know, we've got several touch points for students to get exposure to that. We have an elective sphere that we're really, you know, we're really encouraging students to take advantage of, and it's, rather than, we used to really kind of stagger when we would introduce course selection, so it was like, seniors get the intro first, then it's juniors, then, then it's sophomore, you know, rising sophomores. Right, right now, we kind of have it sort of, that bad information is being rolled out, well, almost simultaneously. Then the elective sphere happens, so that way there, there's kind of this school-wide buzz and conversations are happening about courses and, and what, what students should be thinking about taking, and, and all of that is, that's very deliberate. But I think bringing it back to the, you know, that, I think that's some context, because we really are asking students to, to look at this documents. Spend some significant time with it. You use it to plan ahead, think about how they might fit in some of the floating requirements, like such as, you know, economics and the immune wellness ten through twelve with some of the other things that they might want to, want to take. And, 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 and so we want to make sure that the document really, and I, I, I said the other piece I would say too, is, is culturally, culturally, things have changed with this generation in terms of they're very savvy about wanting to take advantage of opportunities during college credits, during industry-recognized credentials, you know, really get value out of, out of their, their education. So as a result, you know, we really want to make sure that we're illuminating those things that are gonna help students towards those goals, whatever they, they've kind of set for themselves. So, you know, and so kind of bringing it back, right, you know, the program study, some of the things that we've done to update it might be in order to bring it in line with, you know, just current practice, or to, you know, kind of give, give some truth in advertising, right? An example could be New Hampshire Scholars, right? That has a, a piece that requires lab-based sciences, so we've asked the Science Department to, to identify which courses would be lab-based sciences, so students can use that in their four-year planning and understand, okay, if I need to have certain amount of lab-based sciences to get the STEM designation, I know which ones I can, can, can pull from, for, for that. In addition, you know, with regards to the science piece, we've, the Science Department has kind of identified which classes are targeting physical science standards, which classes start targeting earth science standards, which classes are targeting life science standards. And, and our graduation requirement has been three science credits for as long as I've, I've been here. And two of them identified and one sort of like, you know, open to, to choice, and it would be, or, you know, earth, earth system science would, would be the, you know, that would mean kind of the, the physical science piece, the, the living system science would be the life, life science piece, and students would, would pick a third. And the vast majority of students were picking a chemistry or physics class for that, that, that third year of science. And I think in looking at the curriculum and the, the state accountability standards, right? The physical science standards are the area where students are maybe the weakest at, at Sohegan High School. And the standards that had previously been in the earth system science were kind of addressing physical science in a cursory way, right? And so, you know, based on the fact that the majority of students are taking a physical science anyway, that adjustment, I think, brings a line into practice and, and what we've been encouraging students to take for, for sciences across, across their four years as well. So, so again, just, you know, just updating it, I think, you know, being transparent, helping students with their planning and understanding which, which pieces are gonna meet which requirements. And that's all I was gonna share, so.
Yeah, if there, if there are any questions about the change memo, or any rationale behind some of the iterations this year, we're happy to address those now.
I had a couple of questions, please.
Hold on, once I get Mr. O'Keefe's hand.
Just three questions, and Dana, they're for you, sorry. In terms of the, the part that I was surprised when I was reading it in preparation tonight, the lack of new proposals. Like, can you talk a little bit about the process that you engage all the various stakeholders to make a proposal? And then your thoughts as to why this year there weren't no, because in years past, I think there's been multiple, and then to hear that there was none this year, just.
We did get one past the deadline, like last week. So to be fair, we did get one really, really late. We could never have considered it last week. I think, I think a, a major part of it is people are very deeply engaged in departmental work, whether it be the self-study in English, or the self-study in math, or the work that science is doing. And to not see that work through before you're proposing something new might feel a little precipitous. Because you want to be making those proposals based on an identified need or in response. I think another piece to that is we ask for these proposals to be budget neutral, which can be a little bit tricky when we're dealing with X, you know, X amount of F T Es and putting things over, what's gonna come out, what's gonna go in. Again, I think departments are really interested in seeing the work through and what the needs are and desires are of the students. I think in years past, we have had student interest around some new courses that we've been responsive to. So the theater, theater classes are an example of that. The music combos classes are, are an. So, um, the theater, theater classes are an example of that. The music combos classes are, are an example of that. Um, and we just didn't see that this year.
Is there a, a step that we could take to maybe encourage student participation more for, for next year?
Yeah, I'm sure there, I'm sure there is. I think, uh, what, I think I want to pair it with really thoughtful education of students. When they're making the proposals, because what gets really hard is when a student works really hard on a proposal for a course. It becomes very, very personal. And if they feel like, well, I put all this work into it and I really want it. And my friends really want it, but I can't have it because budget, because this, because that, it feels like you offered me something fake. That really wasn't meant to be offered. So I think it's a really great opportunity for students to be educated in terms of the whole. Um, the whole system and what we have and all the considerations that we have to make. And I think we can do that work.
Yeah, just if, if I may just. Because when I take a look at a year and, and the interactions I have with high school kids, and I'm sure the six of us could probably share the same. People come to us all the time with ideas of, wouldn't it be great if they did this? Wouldn't it be great if you guys offered an HVAC program? Wouldn't it be great if, you know, the sign language program? Wouldn't it be great if you guys can offer a Japanese class? Like, you know, all of those things are kept, that popped up and I refer back to the school, go talk to, you know, your, your, the guidance department. Go talk to your advisory and see if there's steps and i- if that stuff's being channeled to me throughout the year, it's just a lonely guy in the mall running inside. Um, I, I'm sure there's more interest in that. And so I worry if there wasn't a available conduit for folks to. Channel that energy through the appropriate channels this year. So.
I think we also see some of that stuff through our ELOs, like with Matt McDonald's, like some of these that like, I want to study sign language. I want to study Japanese. I want an internship in HVAC. I want, I think we do see some of that get channeled that way because. We could want any number of things, but, but when we're doing things to scale, right? And I think that Matt has done a really nice job at coordinating with counselors around like individual kind of, uh, individual. Um, personalized pathways in that way. And so I think we do see some of that with ELOs too.
Dana, could I, 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 there was a point where, you know, I think a couple of years ago where there was. An effort to, to kind of survey students, um, but I, I think it was the timing, the timing of the year, right? I think that was, that, that was undertaken in the fall and it, it didn't allow for the. The information be scaffolded for students to really like, you know, students weren't in the process of thinking about what's available to them. But like, I might, you know, we could maybe take it back and talk a little bit about the timing of, you know, potentially, um, you know. This would be maybe the window, like before the February, after they've gone through course selection, after they've heard of everything else available. If we were gonna put something out there to understand like, hey, was there, is there a subject that you? You know, wo- wo- would be interested in that you maybe just didn't see and, and we could, you know, I think maybe see, see what thoughts are out there. But I think this would be the time for it versus, you know, talking about that in September, you know, about like, oh, I. Wouldn't it be great if we had a psychology class? Well, we, we do have a psychol- you know what I mean? Like, I think sometimes that, that's what came up last time is people were suggesting some things that we, we, we do have just because. It, they, we weren't in that conversation. Yeah.
Thank you. And there's the point of wonder, are we looking for approval of this tonight or is this just an FYI?
It's an FYI, yeah. We don't, there's no technical approval of program studies.
Yeah, I had some question about the new proposals too, and, um, you said the ELOs. Would you say that, um, participation in V-Lax has filled gaps for additional learning that? Isn't available here, but that may be available through that programatics? And are those students, extending of knowledge of this, are they staying in the building to accomplish those like in their free periods? Or any, if they're outside of a, a course that we offer here, but they're in the building, are we, are we encouraging that?
Definitely encouraging students to stay in the building, uh, as much as possible, even when they're on their free periods. Um, it's just good to be here with people, um, whether it's to get support from our fabulous learning common staff. Or to be accessible to other people who are trying to meet with you throughout the day. So in terms of encouraging students to do work here in their free periods. Absolutely, um, is V-Lax filling that gap? Sometimes, um, sometimes, uh, do I think that all students are staying here to do their V-Lax work? Um, but some, but again, sometimes, uh, because they appreciate the structure, they appreciate the accountability. Um, through like a Saber Flex ten twelve, we do have some students taking a Saber Flex ten twelve and then they're using that time. With the support of Melissa Domain to, to kind of structure out their work in that way. Uh, but I think, uh, sometimes students who are signing up for that experience is because they, that level of independence. Um, to do the work at the time that suits them.
Okay, yeah, I just, just, I'm happy that the students have. Not six, but now eight. They have V-Lax now, maybe didn't have that in two thousand and ten, or if they did, you know, made sense at best. BLOs are becoming enriched, the CTE programs growing. I mean, this, I'm really happy to see this, the kind of what you were saying, Tim, about four-year graduation plan. Like where are you going? And kind of your response to Stephen, you know, maybe it's not a one-time solicitation of, hey, this is the time. For, you know, new course proposals. It's more like you can be in control of this, like individual ones. It's like it starts at freshman year. You're in control of your destiny. Here's our offerings. Here's, there's extended learning, you know, maybe not ready for this yet. But, and if you see something you want to study and we don't have it, engage us in conversation. Maybe there's a proposal, maybe there's a V-Lax solution. Maybe it's an ELO. We, we don't know necessarily what the solution is, but the empowerment of the student in the freshman year to know like. They can participate and it's not dependent on any particular deadlines. And who knows when that will emerge and an ideal form and, and maybe others would like it and it does rise to a new course or an evolution of an existing course. Or small group of people go out and do some kind of thing on their own. Uh, we could support that probably within the framework you described. Do you agree?
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd have to kind of talk about it and look at it and I, but I think that's, you know, with, with what we're, with the four-year game planning and the, in the personalized success plan. Like, when we catch wind of experiences that students want to have, we want to be able to like, see it coming and then get out front. Right? I think that's sort of the, the goal of what we're trying to build around that for sure.
Excellent. I, thank you. And, um, I had, um, so exciting to. I'd like to see how that grows. And then for you, Elizabeth, um, when you talked about the process, I think you said it started with a review. Um, being sort of the existing lay of the land. And I'm just curious, when does that review take place?
So we begin, this year we began our review and again, that usually starts in I L T, just kind of affirming the timeline, making sure things. Still feel manageable. That started on September thirtieth of this year. It was when we first, as instructional leadership team, began discussing that process. And then it, it really continues from then until right now, for, yeah, until today. I would say a lot of the revision work and the editing work, um, on the teacher's behalf and like having their hands on that document. Is really happening like early November. And then a lot of it in the administrative work and reviewing and editing and ensuring everything looks good is happening later on in November and throughout December. So if a teacher were to begin to consider that new course proposal, like on October, early November is really the time. To start doing like the deeper work of considering what that would look like.
And you, I guess that's, so what was part of my question, who does the new course proposals? Is it, could it come from a student or? Or from the teacher? Or do they mostly come from teachers?
Yeah, so that's really interesting point. The course proposal form is designed to be filled out by a teacher, but one of the really important aspects of it. And in fact, in the course proposal considerations, the first thing we ask for is student interest, needs and impact, right? So frequently we'll have, we'll have a range of data, right? The teachers will provide us saying, you know, we have this percentage of students. So here's some anecdotal evidence that I have. Here's what I've seen in my class. Here's what students have said to me, who I've had in the past. Here's what I've heard from students in different grades. So that is, um, the very thing.
Great. Thanks for the context. Appreciate it.
Very, very, very quickly, one, thank you for your time. Thank you for waiting through all this and through the public hearing and all that to come talk to us at, you know, seven forty-five at night. Um, I just want to say that I don't necessarily share those same, I don't know if it's a concern, but the, this issue of how come there weren't other new courses proposed? Um, because I think we offer a very wide variety of classes and options and opportunities. And I think it's good that you're reviewing them every year and looking at presumably, is there something that's, you know, getting underused that needs to be changed? But part of it, I mean, I'd rather, if there's courses that are getting used and the classes are getting filled, the teacher's worried about doing, you know. Doing the best they can and putting their efforts towards that versus, um. Necessarily a lot of reaching out for what else can we add? Because I do think, I don't know, I am a kind of stay the course. Let's get, you know, depth versus breadth and let's do what we're doing really well before we're like, how much more can we do? And I think it's good to obviously always ask, is there a big need if something comes up? But I don't see this a weakness that that didn't come forward this year. So that's just my thought.
Yeah, we're, we have teachers who care deeply about depth versus breadth. So it's really, it's really nice. You know, every year they're very cognizant of like, I want to keep working on this. Right? Or we have a lot of new teachers here, right? Or like, I just want to get very, very good at what I've been doing the last few years.
One thing I want to bring up, because I know there's been questions about JLP writing for us, whether it's in graduation requirements or not. Uh, there's two ways we can address it. One, it is in policy committee right now is my understanding. And if we, John and Dan are the two policy committee reps, they can work with Steve, Mike, Dana to make sure the policy is drafted. They can then bring that policy to us where we can have that discussion there. And then depending on that vote, it either becomes graduation current where it goes, or we can have it at a full school board meeting. And I just have a quick feedback of where people are comfortable, where they have a, let policy handle it, bring it to us, then we have a discussion then. Or would you rather have it full at the board?
Year first.
Yeah.
The policy committee.
And then you take back to policy to draft the actual policy.
We would be.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Having the form that the board thinks is a unit.
Yeah.
Will help draft the policy that the board was willing to accept. If we go down a direction that is inconsistent with what the board members think.
Yeah.
As a unit is.
That's what I, I just want to put out there what the best way to address it is. I'll work with Mike and, and getting on, on a agenda quickly. The presentation, have that discussion.
Look forward to it. Cause that, that's where they actionize and write the board is the approval of the policy, the program studies is, is really an administrative. And but can the board acts through the policy?
Right. And we have a gap right now between what we've, through graduation requirements wise and what's currently in the program of studies, we'd like to.
We're gonna close.
Close the gap of awareness.
Right. Right.
That makes sense to me.
And they're going to go forward with, the kids will sign up for the courses as, as needed, required courses. As we change the graduation requirement, hopefully it falls in line and we're all there. But we'll get that on agenda and have a conversation.
The, we're, we, the, there's a, there's, all right, at, at February or some point, soonish, I don't know, but we're going to hear back from your experience, right?
On writing.
On the writing.
Yes.
That's coming. Really? Yeah.
Yes.
So that'll be, you've helped inform this decision that we'll, we'll make.
Yes.
Um, just, so for my own learning, um, things go to policy committee and then they come back and the board reads them twice before.
Yeah, is that how it works?
Yes.
We can always wait a second ring. So if there is some emergency, we can.
Gotcha.
And I would think we'd be more inclined to maybe wait a second reading if it's something started with us and it was just having them.
Right.
Drafted. Drafted and then it's back to.
If the drafting is based on a vote that's already happened by the board, I think we can.
It's going to be probably a one, one vote. Yes.
The change to the.
I know, it gets lengthy sometimes, right? It takes too long to get things done, you know?
No, it takes, it takes the time that it takes.
It takes the time that it takes. All right.
Flexible for exigent.
Yes.
Great.
There anything else on program of studies? Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening. Thank you. Okay, um, last thing on the agenda is, besides a public comment, is candidate profile and voter guide. We had this discussion before, there was an interest in pursuing this. Um, the information that I had received is that the cost to do it is not huge. I think it was what, two pages? I think you told me it's like two hundred and forty-eight dollars. It wasn't, it's minimal. The, the cost is not a issue. Um, the, the question, the question is, do one, we want to go forward with this? If we do, what are we talking? Half-page, we can equally give margins and then we'll get an absolute drop dead date that Amy has to have it by period.
I think we also have to figure out who's going to do it.
So.
Question came up.
It's not going to go through the clerk.
We got an email, okay. The board notes say maybe, and we have an email from the clerk saying that would be more than.
I will, I'll, I'll have it go through me if everyone's okay with that. I don't care. I'll take it.
Just for discussion, let me start with the motion.
Yeah, go for it.
Says that we'll, um, offer up to one half page in the photo guide for candidates. Statements which would include a biography and, um, whatever they feel.
Biography and, and brief description why they're running.
Statement.
Yeah.
Uh, whatever they want to put in there, as long as it's with, with no ad hominem attacks and keeping it, keeping it positive. Positive statements.
So is there editing if someone doesn't?
I think it's, I think, so I will second that motion and so for the purpose of, so we can have a discussion. I'm sorry. I think we need to figure out who's going to get them. I think it might be worth, if we've got, like, if it's going to be used, Stephanie, that it's a form. Like you fill in your name here, yeah, fill in your content here and.
That's, that could be a way to do it.
And you need to understand that we are not editing. So if you don't.
And we're, we will respectfully ask that people say why you were running and not attack people for why, what they've done wrong. And we will ask that respectfully and hopefully they will. But you know, this is a, something we're trying. We know there's other towns already doing it. Um, but we've lost the, the Amherst citizen, the A U W doesn't exist in worst, there won't be a candidate tonight. There's just a very difficult way for people to communicate and it's a, one of their goals was to try and working on communication. So this was something that.
Exact issue of.
And it could be, it's going to be Mount Vernon and Amherst because it's the voter guide that goes to.
No, the Sohegan Cooperative Voter Guide goes to Mount Vernon voters. This is last year.
Right, so it'd be Mount Vernon, it's just Sohegan candidates, but Mount Vernon and, and Amherst.
Yeah.
Sohegan candidates.
I would also recommend a font, so he could, um, minimum font, font size, so they're not like micro printing. The, uh, manifesto.
A fill-in, yeah, we can fill, we can get a document that's sent to them and it's something that, because when they sign up to run. They leave an email address or a photo. And then I'll get a drop dead date from Amy. I mean, absolutely positively cannot miss. Do you know what that looks like now?
Do, what? It's a week from the end of filing.
Yeah, that's fine. That's it. That's right. It, well, this is like this, if they can't get it in, that it is what it is.
I, yeah. It is, I just will say, you're concerned. The S E U office, the folks who do this, it's Chelsea and myself. We have three voter guys to get, to pull together in a very short amount of time. It is coordination between the board, the budget committee, um. Uh, superintendent's office, our, you know, other folks, we have to deal with the clerk, we need to get a sample ballot that is, that we get from an outside vendor. There is a lot of coordination and formatting, so getting all of the information for all three school districts, I know this is just Sohegan, but. We are, there's only, you know, a few of us that, that, uh, are responsible in putting this out, if to get it to the coffee shop. Read the proof, make sure everything's right, and then it has to go to the post office and they need time to get it metered. And this, the voter guide takes the place of the annual report, which is required to be available to voters. Seven days prior to the vote, which means I need to have it available at the S E U office. We don't like that. We strive to have it in voters' mailboxes within one to two weeks prior. Which takes, so you have to account for the time of the post office and then the mailing time. So it's, it's a lot. Um, and it's your, I understand the reasoning for this. I will say you are adding another complexity. To putting the voter guide together. Um, my other comment is that. This is coming out of the S E U office, as is the other two voter guides. Amherst will not have this information in it. Yep, Mount Vernon will not have this information. It's being sent to Amherst. Sorry, should I stop?
You're great.
So it will go to Amherst residents who will have two different voter guides, one with, one without, same as Mount Vernon. Just some things to consider. Um, I don't, I don't, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to this necessarily, um. But I, it's just, I think that thinking about this, putting this out so quickly this year. Um, there's no time to socialize this really, whereas if this were done next year, you would have more time to socialize this. And let folks know who are considering running to have their information available. Their information available earlier when they file. So just some things to think about.
She brought this up last year.
I, I have. Oh, hold on. Yeah, Steve had his first. Steve had his first, actually, and then.
So thank you very much for sharing that, because it was a ton of stuff that I was going to share that you had just shared. And, um, my concerns are with this entire issue is number one, for some strange reason, it feels like this is steamrolling right now. And our last meeting was just investigate the cost. So I want to put the brakes on this because of exactly what you said, the timing is horrible right now. For us to implement the new strategy without a written formal policy to say to the community that this is the foundation of which we're actually offering it. So that's issue number one. Number two, because I want to be very crystal clear in my language, because I want to be quoted correctly in, in, in a couple of months. Neutrality concerns, right? So including candidate statements that could risk the appearance of favoritism if one candidate's statement is above another. Uh, and one's perceiving more preferential treatment inside the guide. There's no, you know, who is in alphabetical order, is it random? So like that stuff needs to be addressed. Verification challenge, right? Ensuring the accuracy of all candidate statements that may require resources to fact check. What happens if someone puts in some really bizarre sort of fact into their thing? We have no policy to say that we're going to edit it or not edit it. Now this goes out to all of our voters. And, and, and now this is written stone or a copy of public record. Resource limitations, exactly what you just had talked about. Preparing, reviewing, publishing candidate statements are going to demand time and more importantly, effort of people that are doing so many other things right now. And we're throwing this at them at the, at the last minute. Uh, potential for bias, right? Differences in writing ability and style amongst the candidates could unintentionally give someone an advantage, leading to an uneven playing field. Somebody's going to send in with a lot of grammatical errors. Are we going to have an opportunity to go ahead and correct those grammatical errors? Are they going to be going in, in, and sent out? There's no policy about any of that stuff. And so who's the one to blame? Because then the candidate goes, well, the district messed it up. I sent it to you correctly. So I don't want to put us in, 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 into that space. Focus on objective information, right? Voter guides are often intended to provide impartial information to our tax base. To say this is exactly what the district is requesting and here's the rationale why, right? So if we're going to go ahead now and offer some other, you know, speculative or confrontational or just. Random sort of thoughts that may come out of a candidate's sort of will to, 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 to take advantage of some, some byline space inside of our document. What is that going to do to our process to go ahead and give an objective piece of paper to, uh, to, to the community? I'm not in favor of this. I've said that very clearly last year. I still remain not in favor of it. The district should not be in the business of running campaigns. This is taxpayer funded component to someone running a campaign for office. Mike.
Pointed there first, so we can hear from others in response to Ms. Vacy and Mr. O'Keefe. Mr. O'Keefe?
When this was brought up last year. Whoa, 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 this is last minute. We can't do this. Let's put this off. We'll have a discussion over the next month. Side of it's something that we should do. The only reason this is coming up to the last minute again is because it wasn't put on an agenda earlier in a timely manner. This isn't. This is something that I think we should do. It's something that other communities do. Um, it's something that I think is important for providing access to, uh, the voters to, to provide information to them. Without any other, uh, without a newspaper, without, uh, uh, any kind of local A A. You. University Women's Program anymore. Uh, this is something that, uh, these are candidates that are running, were paying for their election. Why, how, maybe we shouldn't pay, maybe we should make them pay for their own election if we want to, uh, if we're worried about the cost of candidates. You know, campaigns and stuff like that. What they put in there is up to them. We have no editing. Uh, process whatsoever. If they want to come in with ad hominem attacks and, and bad language in there, we don't publish it. Period. We put in, you know, some guardrails that says no ad hominem attacks, minimum font, font sizes, so they can't micro print. Uh, you know, a manifesto in there. Uh, this is something where you get to. Give us your bio, your, your information. And then a brief candidate statement. This isn't for you to, to go on a, you know, a campaign diatribe. Uh, this is something that I think is important for the community. I, I supported. I know that Milford does it for their town elections. It's something that I don't care if any other districts do it. I don't care if we're different than anybody else. We're different with Sohegan. We were different to begin with. We're still different now, and I, I don't think that's an argument for or against. So. I'm for it. No matter what.
Anyone else?
Cold ones water. I, I would. Table this. And specifically going around the agenda, because to me it seems very, very fast, or what needs to happen, especially the guidelines. So great guidelines and great thoughts, but. To get that in motion. And to do it between now and the next couple of weeks, just seems really, really tight. There, uh, and I would, I would book this to. The, uh, S A U very nice board to give. Fair and equal across all three boards. So then the administration can say, okay, this is an opportunity. If that board wants to take it up. Then, you know, in May, April, whenever they can take it up, and then we know coming through next year, we can be prepared.
The, the filing period. Yeah, who decides that? So we have no leeway there.
Yeah, we got no.
Cause the one thing I don't love is how quickly. I don't love the idea of having someone having to get something completed, done and filed. Seven days after the end of the filing period. That, that part to me. Feels potentially rushed, because you're right, you're going to have people who are signing up on whatever, January thirtieth. And then they're told, by the way, you need to do this, and they're not going to know yet. And it's, it's unfortunate, because we don't have the, uh, you know, the kind of debate type stuff we had. But they're not even going to know what the issues are going to be that the other, you know, their opponent might be, you know, they're, what are they responding to? What aren't they responding to? Um. And it's, it's unfortunate, there's, and it puts a lot more pressure on your office, you know, the administration. I mean, it's, it's unfortunate, there's not a way to have. Like that part stretched out, because if it was like, okay, great, end of the filing period. Month to get something in, you know, two weeks to get it in, and then two more weeks for you to get finalized and the printer, that would be nice, you know? And I am a little concerned over the, um. The, the not having the other, I, I get and appreciate Dan's point on the, you know, we don't have to do what the other districts do. Um, I also think there's a risk though, that then people read it and you start getting stuff like, oh, no one from this district even bothered turning in their. You know, their bio or, you know, so I don't know. Mixed feelings.
Mr. O'Keefe. If there were time and consideration at the S A U level and it was a joint project that potentially could be handled. By the board and at least deliver a ninety-five percent. Good version to the S A U staff, so as not to drain their resources. Is that a conversation you'd be open to in the future?
Yeah, so, so, so good question, right? And it really has to come down to, I guess you could say, the foundation of what we're trying to accomplish here. And when I take a look at a voter guide, and more importantly, for the folks up at Malvern, and. I take a look at a voter guide as the facts of what I'm voting for. On the ballot from a warrant article standpoint, from a budget standpoint, and what's the authority telling me? Just making words their request. When I take a look at a candidate running for office, I see an opportunity for them to go ahead and share what their vision is with the community. And part of that is your uniqueness to bring that vision and how do you deliver that to me? So in the town of Malvern, which we're not talking about, we already have a venue to do that. Our friends at the library host an event at our village school just before election with all the candidates. They come in. Community members come in and they listen to the back and forth, and there's literally a debate that town residents can see and we stream it. So although Amherst may have lost that, Malvern still has it. And so I look at it through that lens as a Malvern taxpayer, why should we be subsidizing candidates campaigning? And from my perspective, I just feel it's inappropriate. It's inappropriate. I feel there are better mechanisms. It's twenty twenty-four. There are many avenues to deliver messaging. Uh, uh, from any one of us individually to our communities, whether I go out and I pay for a Facebook ad. Whether I, um, join Twitter and blast out through, through Twitter advertising. Whether I stand at the dump on, on a, on a Saturday trying to communicate with people, I hold an office hour visit at my town library. So it's thinking outside the box, and as a candidate, that's what I would expect. I don't want somebody to go ahead and just get a message that's taxpayer funded and delivered to me in the mail and then consider it done. So from that perspective, that's right. But the core to our issue that really we're not talking about is, there's no policy about this. And it opens us up to liability if, let's say, we get something that's slanderous. And somebody goes and says, hi, my name is Jimmy Johnson. I'm running for office because I hate Stephanie Grun. And I'm going to take her out and we're going to, you know, slaughter her at the next campaign. It's an inappropriate thing for us as a body to edit that, because there's no policy. But as it stands right now, we couldn't stop somebody from that. Because would we be in, 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 in. Would we be opening up to a First Amendment debate there? And we're allowing an avenue for somebody to go in and we can't say what you can and can't say, because you're a candidate for office. So we're opening this, this page to you as a bio, and you just happen to leverage that bio for, uh, for, for, for a purpose that we may not agree with. And that's the slippery slope that we're really going down with a lack of policy for us to say, yes, we're going to do this. And I'll probably be on the losing end of that vote, which is fine, because I'm on the losing end of a couple of votes. But you know what? We'll have a policy in place that then stipulates to somebody, these are the parameters that we're allowing. And that's the piece that we would then take to a court to say, yes, this candidate meet our criteria that was previously published. That it voted on and washed through our process of policy creation.
I think you have a very good point on the free speech issue, because I don't think. I mean, especially without some written. I mean, certainly, policy committee can, could, could work on something, but I think without something written. That's consistent and sets out like a lot of parameters. There does become that question of, well, you know. You can't, and it's not even that I'm so, so worried about necessarily an, an ad hominem tax specifically, but. You know, some things just flat out wrong or a lie or just.
Or misinformation about actual facts that are in the voter guide.
Right.
I'm running because this budget is full of errors. Uh-oh.
Right, and, and I think you're right. I think it creates a problem for us to, to edit. That, because we are a governmental unit. And so we do have those free strike, this free speech issues that don't apply to things like. The Facebook page, you know, they're allowed to say, this is my Facebook page. I'm not going to have you on here. With, you know, these certain types of speech, and I think that starts becoming an issue for us.
Multiple court cases, as you know firsthand, involving municipal agencies here in the state of New Hampshire. And one of them involves law enforcement agencies editing what people are putting on those law enforcement Facebook pages.
Yep.
And so if they put something slanderous or something that, that law enforcement agency cannot go in and delete that message.
Yeah.
Because you opened up an avenue for comments, and we learned that here in this body over the last three years. By actually having our Facebook things and allowing comments, and then you can't go back and delete them.
Yeah, not.
And so in lack of a policy, and for all the other reasons that I already mentioned, I am against this.
And I think it's, if we're going to a policy, I think it's, you know, you've convinced me for what it's for. Despite the fact, I think it's, it was a great idea to try to get this, the word out somehow. Um, a policy that probably gets run by council.
We have no legal review right now.
Okay, all the other information in the voter guide that comes in is either from the board or from S U staff or, uh, finance committee and. And I actually read every word and do have corrections made fairly often on, on some things that are sometimes not significant. But there is an editing process, because this is coming out of the S A U. It wouldn't want to make sure everything in there is accurate.
Mm hmm. Okay.
Something to say on the matter too.
All right. Less comments, I think, here.
I look at this voter guide, it says, where does it say voter guide? Official ballot, guides to official ballot voting, and that is a sample ballot. First thing that's the voter sees are the names of the candidates for office. The one thing that they don't have in here is any information about those people. So that's a problem, I think, for the voters to be informed about how they're going to vote, which includes the people. And so it's, it's a worthwhile endeavor, in my opinion, to get this done. Um, it's unfortunate that we didn't discuss it, uh, uh, it, it, it. Uh, until now, in, in depth, really. Um, I think though that some of the fears are. Are misplaced. You have to be a, a real person. You have to put your name, you have to be a resident. You're going to be presented in front of the community. This is not Facebook. And if somebody wants to write some ridiculous thing in there, then they can tank that, they're, feel free to tank their own campaigns that way. I think what we'll find is, uh, serious people making serious statements. And taking the job of running their candidacy seriously. And, you know, we, we pilot a lot of things in, in this school, and there's here a little bit here. Uh, we can, you know, we'll have the page, you want, you know, two hundred and fifty words, margins and sure. There's, there's a basic parameters, but otherwise, if I was, if I was advocating for this policy, it would be, there is no. There is no restriction on what you can say as a candidate. These are your words. And I mean, unless they're obviously violative, free speech, you can't threaten somebody. We wouldn't publish that. I don't think we'd be, we'd be obliged not to propagate, um, speech that is, uh, obviously violative. But could, somebody could, could use the opportunity, they could say, you know what, I'm going to put my name in the hat and put myself out there publicly. Just so I can get a, a half a page in the voter guide to say something nasty to people, it's a risk. I grant you that. Um, but that's not our history of candidates running for office. Um, the candidates running for office are either serious people who take, who really want it, or they're people who say, you know, oh my gosh, I put my name in and they don't really campaign, they back away. That's our history. That's what we're up against. I'm willing to put my faith that that's what we're going to do in this pilot test and get this done this year. And see how it, see how it plays out. That's my hypothesis. Because the voters deserve it. Voters need the information. It's really, really hard as a voter to find any information about these candidates. Um, and if you want to take that seriously, then it's, it's very difficult. You need a lot of computer resources, you need a lot of computer savvy. And, you know, we have a lot of people in our community who, who may not have those skills and would really appreciate having. Some words behind a name to say, who the heck is this person? How can I learn more about?
Couldn't we, would we have an option of putting in the voter guide? A. Um, just like a, a two sentence thing saying. Candidates who are running, um, have been invited to come give. Statement about themselves. At.
I have an idea.
An event on X Day.
Yeah.
You know, the equivalent of your, Mont Vernon has this thing at the library. It doesn't have to be that necessarily, but we have invited them.
But I think we ask community council if they're running candidates night.
Yeah.
So. So I would, I have to tell you, I was originally in favor of this. I wanted to do something to help our communication. I wanted to do that. But I have to, I will say, Mr. O'Keefe, there are a couple of things you brought up that I think are extremely valid that worry me. Um, I like the idea of being able to do this somehow, but maybe it is something we can coordinate through an S A U that's vetted with policy that is. To make sure we're not going to. If I like, who is going to vet a, what is considered a threat, what is not, it crosses the line for different people. We don't know what that language looks like.
So committee.
There's some other things, so, but.
Tell one win, like in the voter's guide, it could be, this is where to get information.
Ask them.
The problem is that timing wouldn't work, because they would get that a week before and.
I, I think community council runs a candidate's night.
Yeah.
I think that's the best idea for us to ask.
I've done candidate stays. It's not hard to get that information out. People who don't use a computer are used to checking the library bulletin board and the post office bulletin boards. And I have women all the time, someone specifically asked if Michael could have something posted at the post office yesterday.
Um. I wouldn't mind looking at this through an S A U white sort of thing to see if it is a possibility or not, but that's not something, that's not something that's going to happen this year though. Because it, I mean, there are some things I was concerned about, but. I think I'm willing to, uh.
I.
I, I'm thinking we're going to have to take a vote anyway. Yeah. Last thing.
Part of my frustration is that. We seem to have a process of delay and deflect.
I know.
That we don't, we don't bring things up that. Aren't comfortable or we're not sure we want to do and.
I think there's some legal, I think there's some legal valid.
Before we get to this, if we, if we go with this process.
Yeah.
So that's why I kind of want to.
I just think there's some legal things that need to be vetted. And that's my worry.
I was on policy committee last year and I, I, it just didn't occur to me to bring it up at policy committee last year. In hindsight, I should have done that. In hindsight, I should have done that. And maybe, I don't know.
After this motion, we vote on it, we instruct the policy.
Right, right.
Bring that forward.
Um, but I do think having a formal written policy that can be relied on as opposed to.
Okay.
Again, can be vetted.
So where we are now, I just want to be able to take a vote, um, and then we can decide maybe quick next step, but. So the motion on the floor is to have it, is to have this half, it was offer up to half-page candidate statement. Biography, brief statement of why they are running. Please make it positive. So that's the motion on the floor. So those in favor of the motion? Two, those opposed. That would be five, so that will fail. Can I have a motion though to have our policy reps take it to policy committee to explore?
Can I actually bifurcate that?
Yes.
West a little bit. So I think the appropriate approach for the seven of us, or whoever the seven people are going to be sitting at this table, I should say, that in the month of May, June or July, at a meeting, come up and brainstorm ways to better engage the community around election time to incorporate not only our ballot initiatives, but our candidates that are running for office. Of which at that time, that board can then brainstorm if this is a viable option. And are there alternatives that we are not talking about now? Like could the S A U sponsor a candidate meet the candidate night? Where everyone comes to the Amherst library for Amherst candidates, or goes to the Bonverden Village School for Bonverden candidates, where then people have a meet and greet type thing. We already do that, so I'm assuming that the Bonverden thing would be taken care of. But clearly, there's, what I'm hearing, there's a desire to do something like that at Amherst. But to put that on an agenda versus just immediately create a policy about this, because.
Needs to be explored.
I think, ex- exactly. I think thinking out of the box is a good idea. I don't necessarily agree with this one, but coming up with some sort of approach to better engage our community. That's the reason why we all ran for office to better inform our constituents about what we're doing on a daily basis. Coming up with ideas and then out of that session, then identifying what the board wants to move forward. That would be my recommendation.
And this is a first year, Mr. O'Keefe, to your point, that we haven't had some kind of candidate's night. The group that was running it is not going to do that anymore. So I think we can come up with a substitute.
So.
I don't know why we went through the wrong. I mean, wait.
Well, it was May, June or July, depending on the priorities of the.
So I'm going to talk to community council. And I'm going to see if they can, if they're willing and interested in running a candidate's night.
Will you want board support for that? Cause I would make such a motion.
Please.
To, please, uh, let's see if our community council will be willing to accept the task of running a candidate's night for Sohegan Cooperative candidates. Amherst school board candidates, town candidates. I don't know. Mount Vernon candidates, town and school. So what's this scope? Question mark? And maybe that's a different motion.
I think it's a, would you, would you amend your motion so that it's just to ask them if they run a candidate's night for Sohegan and to expand it out to any other organizations that the community council decides it wants to and who might be interested in participating? Cause it seems to me they ought to be reaching out.
We're making this very confusing for dinner.
Should have made it very simple. I guess my, my thought was first would be to task them with the Sohegan candidate.
Right. And then they could.
That, then they could go, if they had bandwidth to say, you know what, let's tackle everything that A U W is doing. Maybe plus adding Mount Vernon, if Mount Vernon was, people were willing to, wanted to participate. Then I would direct them to go talk to Deirdre and, and see how they did it.
Make a motion to speak to community council regarding hosting a candidate's night. Or at least.
Period.
Yeah.
Candidates, and we can just.
I would give.
We can let them decide how.
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll see if they.
Do you give that simple one?
Very simple. Okay, can I have a second on that motion?
A second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on that motion? All right, we'll have them vote on, talk to the council, and that's a seven zero.
Was, was that a motion that you, Stephen, was that a motion that you made?
It was bifurcating. No, he was bifurcating, did not make.
No, I just wanted to. I can make a motion to make sure it's added to the agenda. I don't think it's necessary.
I just want to make sure we didn't like. Without a motion, could we just, the poll, the notion of a policy, we have some policy committee meetings before. We, we have one next week, right? Let's see if it's canceled or something. And we have another one a couple of weeks thereafter. There's our regular schedule. I mean, there's nothing preventing us, Dan and I, from saying, hey, this has been a topic of conversation that our table, there's some of the concerns raised, you know, um, the concerns that were raised, legal liability concerns. We don't have a policy around it. Several people voiced that concern and, um, we'd like to see if there's a way to tackle it here in this room. Men, I mean, we have to tackle it that very day, but just to put it on their radar uh, as a committee, and maybe the committee members in that room can take it back to their respective boards, meetings and talk to their membership and see, gauge interest that way and so on and so forth. And, and start now so that we're not in a position next year saying, what the hell happened to the year when it went by and we're doing damn fine? I'd rather keep, keep, keep the conversation going. Policy can take, especially a good one, um, uh, that needs legal vetting. It can take a while. It took Laura Taylor nine months to get her, her, um, student staff interaction policy put together. So, um, I'd say let's, let's keep going. We got some momentum. We, there's general interest in, in engaging. And if there's a policy, policy solution, let's get the conversation going.
Okay.
We're good with that? You can take that.
You can take it and see where the conversation goes.
Share this debate with everyone and say, is there a policy solution? Are you guys interested? See where it comes.
And the other benefit is if we do, if, if y'all did going forward, have like a set night that could be decided for candidate's night a couple of months back, people can start setting aside those things. You know, that's not going to involve that issue, but you know, again, if it's a plan, everybody knows it's coming, you can work around it.
Well, the, the A U W would send out letters to the candidates that you wouldn't get that letter until you knew they were a candidate, which isn't till after the filing deadline. Which isn't for another two weeks or something like that.
Yeah. All right. So before we get conversation versus running a meeting, um, we're going to end that now. And the last thing we have is public input, two of two. There is no.
Can I just give one committee update? I just wanted to report that we had a constitutional interpretation committee meeting. The motion the board made that went past was accepted in terms of ability to move forward. We had a full meeting, full participation, our first real full meeting, and so we made progress. I don't really have anything more to.
We can throw that on January thirty.
I just wanted you to know that the motion was very helpful.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes.
Um, so public input, no one in the room. There's one person online. If they want to raise their hand, if not, going. Going gone. Okay, then, uh, motion to end the meeting.
I'll make that motion.